So, apologies. We have a couple of apologists. councillor Longley, Cathy Hadley and Neil Taylor, Director of Places and Commercial, and Graham Kane, who's the Director of Strategy, Delivery and Transformation. So, moving on. Item two, notification to request from members of the public to address the meeting. We have two, which is Mr and Mrs Taylor, who would like to speak on item 10, which is the Northamptonshire Highway Services Contract Scrutiny Review. So I'll call you up when we get to that item. So, minutes of the meeting held in public on 14th of January 2020. Cabinet, are we happy with those meetings, with the minutes?
Very.
So I'll sign those. Okay, declarations of interest by councillors, if there are any, that aren't recorded in our declarations of interest. Cabinet, are there any further declarations of interest? Okay, announcements. Firstly, one, about those members who have got the papers printed, whether you could keep those to save printing them again because they're quite weighted documents, especially the budget documents for council next week. And I'll just ask the chief exec, there's been some activity in Parliament around a structural change order, so I'll just ask the chief exec to give us a bit of an update, if that's okay.
Yes, yesterday, the structural change order was debated in the House of Commons in committee, and I understand today it's on the list to go to a vote. It's due to go to the House of Lords this afternoon after four o'clock, again, for debate, and to be voted on Thursday at the House of Lords. If the vote goes through today at the House of Commons unopposed, it would then be, and then goes through the Lords, as I said, this evening and Thursday, it would then be made. Until it goes through that process, it still won't be an order that's made. If it is opposed, it would then be deferred until after the recess to be discussed.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is the scrutiny review of the draft 2020-21 of the council budget proposals. So I'll ask councillor Scrimshaw to come and address Cabinet as Chair of Scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to formally present this report to Cabinet from the Scrutiny Budget Working Group, and hope that you found it useful and informative in deciding your final draft budget proposals, which we'll be discussing shortly. I don't intend to go through the report line by line or page by page, but would like to highlight some of the general themes that the committee discussed. For example, the financial risks involved in areas involving third parties. We're not suggesting that the council shouldn't be involved in partnership work with others. For example, it's essential in some cases, with health, for example, but only that you be aware that when you do, the council may not have direct control over everything, and therefore there may be future pressures outside of the council's direct control. We also wanted to highlight the potential risks around the timings of proposals being fully implemented, and the need therefore to remain financially flexible when and if any pressures arriving from delays in implementation are raised. And perhaps most importantly, of the need to recognise the consequences of any under-delivery proposals or changes in the in-year budgetary position that might have on proposed unitaries moving forward. We also spent some time looking at the council's reinvestment proposals, which included forecasts for inflation, future demand pressures and the re-baselining element designed to correct problems from this year's budget. And if any of those forecasts or assumptions are wrong, they could potentially have a far greater impact on next year's budget than some of the individual savings proposals. And again, this is an area that could have serious implications for the future legacy left towards unitaries. Other than that, I'd just like to thank all members of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee that took part in a series of workshop meetings, and also other non-executive councillors who took the time to become involved, and also in particular to the portfolio holders and to the council's officers that made themselves available to our questioning, and in particular the officers who sometimes faced robust and challenging questions. They handled themselves professionally, and it's worth mentioning that their contributions strongly added to our final report. And again, I hope that this has helped Cabinet's understanding of the issues we discuss, and in turn has helped you prepare your final recommendations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Scrimshaw. And maybe it's this one. Okay, well, I'll give a brief summary, if I may. First of all, at the beginning of the process, I put the challenge to scrutiny to say, this is the last budget of Northamptonshire County Council. We want to do the best job we possibly can. The budget came out a month earlier than usual to add to that time around robustness and challenge. And, you know, I thoroughly welcome the work that scrutiny has done. I turned up to the sessions I couldn't, and I know colleagues did, and especially your last wrap-up session, I followed the whole meeting and noted your points of concern, which are fair. And we've discussed these as Cabinet as well, and we'll be doing what we can to listen to scrutiny and those concerns. So, to that end, I think scrutiny has done a very, very good and thorough job, and I welcome the point around the overall robustness of the draft budget, where you point out the ONS committee considers that this draft budget generally represents a better, more robust budget than examples that have been produced by the council in previous years. It seems to be based on an approach that is transformational, rather than just seeking budget savings. At the same time, the committee recognises there are still risks involved. And as we all know, there are risks involved in delivering any budget, but I am confident, and if you look at the section 151 officer's comments in Appendix K of the main budget report, it talks about how robust and how this budget has been challenged and indeed altered in some areas to reflect some of the concerns. So, I am happy, and I note the concerns of scrutiny, that a good and thorough job has been done, and I'm happy to recommend the report to Cabinet. So Cabinet, any comments, or are we happy to accept the report?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as councillor Longley isn't here today, I will be taking his items. So we'll move on to the final budget, 2020-21. So I think it's right firstly to reflect that almost to the week, two years ago, was the issuing of the 114 notice. And if anybody had said to me then that, we'll be here in two years' time having balanced two budgets, and we've got one of the best budgets, I would say, in the country before us today, I had found it very difficult to believe. Colleagues will know, and I've said it many times, that my commitment when I became leader and when we took our new roles in Cabinet here was to do everything in our power to put the finances and services of Northamptonshire County Council in the best position possible as we transitioned to local government reform. I'm pleased to say that days like today, which represent significant milestone moments, that to me demonstrate we are honouring that commitment. As I say regularly at Cabinet, the progress we have made is directly linked to the brilliant and hard work of officers, the wise counsel and guidance of the commissioners, and of course, the hard work and commitment of all of our members across party to do the right thing on behalf of the residents of Northamptonshire whom we all serve. The budget is a very weighted document, so I'll probably try and cover off some of the main points in my presentation. One of the first things, and I've already mentioned it, is the fact that budget has existed in draft form since the Cabinet meeting on the 12th of November, which was a month earlier than usual, in an attempt to make this final budget-setting process of Northamptonshire County Council totally transparent and as robust as possible. And I believe that aim has been achieved. If you look at the reports, it outlines at the beginning on page 55, the key things that underpin the 2020-21 budget, and these are: an addressing of financial pressures identified in the 1920 budget monitoring process by re-baselining service pressures; a balanced budget with provision made for contingency to strengthen the council's financial resilience; growth in all directorate areas; the allocation of resources to ensure the most vulnerable residents kept safe; working effectively with our local partners, including health service and district and borough councils. And I can confidently say from the meetings I attend that I believe those relationships are in the best place they have probably ever been. We've got a commitment to staff through the money invested in the staff pay award, and a continuous pursuit of efficiency and savings, mainly through commissioning-led activity. Activity continues to track, and rightly so, the savings in this current year, which included proposals of £41.4 million. The current year's monitoring of the budget shows a forecast understand of £29,000. The expectation is that the council will start the next financial year with a clean slate, and this is the first year for 10 years where reserves have not been used. You will see on page 58, a high-level summary of the figures involved, which demonstrates the enormity of the budget we deal with, and shows a gross-based budget requirement of £643.3 million, and illustrates what income is received and how the net funding requirement of £447.7 million is achieved. The following section details with consultation progress, process which commenced on 13th of November and closed on Christmas Eve. The consultation feedback summary is contained in the main paper pack and is a lengthy and interesting document in its own right. And for the eagle-eyed, I'm looking at councillor Stanborough, there is a minor typo, paragraph 7.1, referring to proposal 180610, the target delivery of Rose Maintenance. It should read, the proposal had the highest number of respondents that agreed with it, and also the highest number of respondents that disagreed with it. Scrutiny, as has already discussed, played a significant part and commented on the overall robustness, that this draft budget generally represents a better, more robust budget than previous years, and it's based on a much more transformational approach, rather than simply seeking savings. Page 64 illustrates some changes to the budget since the publication of the draft. Some additional service pressures are recognised, as well as changes to inflation and changes to council tax calculations. Personally, I welcome the fact changes have been made, as again, it demonstrates a continued further due diligence on the budget throughout the time between the draft and what we have before us today. One very significant inclusion in the capital strategy, as described at 10.7 on page 65, this follows a request from Cabinet to officers and commissioners to include a scheme to make a difference to the roads of Northamptonshire. This has been led by councillor Smithers and is before us today in a form of a capital investment of £655,000 to purchase three machines which will increase pothole repairs from £10,000 to £48,000 per year, which will make a significant impact. I have to thank officers and the commissioners for responding positively to this challenge, which will make a huge difference to all of our roads, and I look forward, as I'm sure most of us, to seeing them in our own patches. 10.10 describes the changes to savings by £0.4 million from 23.3 to 22.9, and follows the outcomes of consultation, overview and scrutiny feedback, and further internal due diligence, like listening to staff on their views on things like proposals relating to the social work academy. Again, positive robust evidence that this budget-setting process is as good as it possibly can be. Whilst the 2020-21 savings target is just over half of the previous year, achieving these savings will still be a challenge to the organisation, as has been pointed out by scrutiny. Given the massive amount of work going on here, particularly in local government reform, it is the role of Cabinet with senior officers to measure and monitor their delivery. The next section of the report deals with council tax rates, business rate retention and revenue support grant, and we will be in receipt of revenue support grant for 2020-21 as the 75% retention pilot closes. The report at 12.31 references future funding announcements and fair funding review. And these are obviously critical considerations for the two new authorities who will, this time next year, be setting the budget for the first year of their existence. Section 13 deals with the dedicated schools grant, which as we know passes for NCC. Colleagues, we have spoken a number of times about what a suitable figure for reserves is for an authority of this type and size. The likes of £100 million has been talked about. However, we have to remember that just two years ago, reserve levels were basically non-existent. The table on page 77 shows that with a £2 million gain back into the budget delivery reserve, the total general fund and earmarked reserves will stand at £42,046,000. Again, another step in honouring our financial commitment to the final year of the authority. The budget report finishes references to the capital strategy, treasury management, and the fusion of that's local government reform strategy, all critical areas in their own right. Appendix K includes a commentary from the Chief Finance Officer on the robustness of the 2020-21 budget estimates and the adequacy of contingencies and reserves. So if you indulge me, I'll just read a paragraph out. At 1.27, the 151 officer comments that the intense scrutiny of the 1920 budget and the marked improvements of the leadership, management and governance of this authority have led to a more openness and transparency. The draft budget was delivered in November, earlier than usual, allowing more time for consultation and scrutiny. As a result, councillors can be more confident that the base budget has been thoroughly reviewed, weaknesses have been identified and addressed, and it provides a sound platform for 2020-21. I have to thank everyone who has had a part to play throughout the process of developing, challenging and scrutinising the budget we have before us today. As I mentioned at the start of my presentation, we've come a very long way. One particular point of note is that I have not been contacted by any single personal group to voice objections or concerns regarding any element of this year's budget, which even compared to last year is a marked difference. This budget, the very last of this organisation, points the way to a new future for public services in the county, and I'm proud to present it today. And of course, today's report will no doubt be debated well at full council next week. So Cabinet are asked to approve the recommendations outlined at the front of the report, and I'm happy to present this report to Cabinet. Thank you. So, we have... councillor Stanborough.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thanks for calling me. It means you've got my email, which is good news. So, just wanted to pick up on a couple of things and maybe make a point. You've said that it's your ambition to leave the county council's finances in the best possible position. Of course, you'll know, the job isn't yet done, and there's a big challenge in this coming year to make sure that you carry out that ambition. I thought it was interesting that you highlighted what's in the capital part of the budget, about the new machines that are being bought to repair potholes, and the increase in the number of potholes that are going to be repaired from £10,000 a year to £48,000 a year. Does course imply that currently 38,000 potholes a year are going un-repaired, which is quite shocking figure really, when you think about it like that? So, good news about the new machines, not so good news about the potholes that are currently not being repaired. In the budget, there is a saving that's been currently in there around gritting of the county's roads. You remember that this was proposed, a very similar thing a couple of years ago, and in due course, the proposal was withdrawn because I think you rightly concluded that it wasn't the right thing to do. It's now back in the current budget, it's still in there, even though scrutiny raised some concerns. I would urge you to think about reconsidering that particular saving, because cutting the length of roads we grit, from the sort of 42%, 43% is at the moment, to the 32% that's being proposed, say £300,000, not a good idea in my view. Can I just make a general point? Hopefully this won't happen, but it usually does in some way or another, that as we go through the financial year, there will be slippage in the delivery of some of the savings proposals. Some will prove to be undeliverable, hopefully only in parts, but maybe in whole. And what will that, that will then mean is that mitigating actions will need to be taken. This year, more than ever, those mitigating actions need to be ongoing savings, to mitigate on, slippage in ongoing savings, simply because what you don't want to do at the end of the year is leave the new unitary authorities in year one of their budget-setting process. The first thing they need to do is re-baseline what they receive from the county council, simply because we weren't able to deliver the budget that we set out to deliver. You know, I hope that you would sort of take that point in the spirit, it's made, it's about handing on the best possible position to the unitary authorities, which is something you said you'd like to do. And I would hope that it will be an aim, that if there is any slippage or non-delivery, that we don't hand on to the new unitaries a position where they're playing catch-up from day one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Stanborough?
Sorry, Scrimshaw. Am I cold? No, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, that's fair. Councillor Smithers, did you want to give us a bit of your insight onto these machines and what they should achieve?
Absolutely, Chairman. Thank you very much. The 10K to 48K in potholes, the potholes are being filled under our statutory requirement, and will happen and will continue to happen. These machines that are on the network currently, actually, in areas, we have two types, which are thermal patching machines, where effectively the credentials of these machines are fantastic. They melt the road underneath a big metal plate, for want of a better explanation, and it just makes the tarmac, like brand-new tarmac again. And then there's a small amount of tarmac maybe added, and then it's rollered flat again. Now, the benefits of this is that they're seamless pothole repairs, these are. So, you know, water then can't get in, you know, round the outsides, as we've all very seen over the years before, you know, you repair a pothole, water gets in, it pops out, and so on, and it's that vicious cycle. So these machines are very clever at doing that. There's some fantastic cost savings to be had here on, you know, with these machines as well. Based on figures that I've been presented by the guys, is £35 a square metre to replace a pothole up to sort of £90 a square metre, doing it in the old-fashioned ways. Now, the thermal patching machines are quite ecologically friendly. You don't have to take away any of the muck, there's no, there's no big drilling out process going on, there's, you know, there's none of that big heavy lorries coming in, taking away the muck and so on. So, you know, the credentials are ticked there, the solar panels as well on the machines, it's pretty good stuff. I've seen them in operation, and I believe we're going to have some demonstrations done, which I would encourage all councillors to come and have a look at, to see these machines in action. Then the other thing that we're putting out is Roadmaster, which has been on the network for a period of time, which is better suited for the rural network due to its more coarse way of dealing with things. You know, you have a pothole, it comes and blasts out any water or debris, it sprays it, it puts some more stuff in there, and again, it's rolled, and the pothole's repaired. It also seals cracked areas, which then goes on to extend the life of the road, the asset, as to say, and it builds up on broken edges as well. So, you know, on the country rural networks, where you've got edges that are just breaking away on the tiny little country roads, this machine can go along and repair those. And, you know, and it can do vast amounts. So, you know, there's some real positive stuff being brought forward here, and we're challenging everyone to bring forth what we can. And again, as the leader has said, thank you to the commissioners, the leadership team as well for facilitating this. And, you know, we hope to see these into Northamptonshire for a long while moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smithers. So, just to address some of the points councillor Stanborough made, the job's not done yet. Totally agree. That's our pure focus, is we've got to see this, see this through. And we've made that commitment, have made that clear lots of times. So, job not done. I think we've just covered the pothole part. You know, the more efficient we can get, the sooner those, those numbers all come down. Mitigating actions, I think the, everybody's seen this year how well the organisations responded to the challenges, challenge around some budgetary pressures in some areas, and it's reacted well to help to mitigate some of the actions. And of course, we don't want to knock those on into the following year. And I think there is a commitment through the baselining and that approach to having a clean slate, that, you know, we're going to be doing our very best to set up the unitaries to succeed, and our commitment remains totally dedicated to that. So Cabinet, we've got no more comments, and I know we'll be debating this well at full council next week. So, are we happy to agree the recommendations laid out at the front in the paper?
Agreed.
Thank you. So, item eight is the monthly capital report, forecast outturn as a period nine for the financial year ending 31st of March 2020. I won't make too much out of this report, other than to say that obviously we're now showing an underspend of £29,000 as a surplus. And in the report, it talks about the risks and how, as I've just mentioned, the organisation has responded to deal with the budget pressures in some of the areas. Frankly, it's, this is again down to incredible hard work, and all of the people involved, whether it's members, the commissioners, the chief exec and the senior staff, have worked very, very hard on getting us to a point where we are now, where we're talking about an overspend in period nine. We've obviously still got three more periods to go, so hopefully we can continue to see some growth in that, in that underspend, sorry. Yeah. So at 3.3, it talks about the breakdown of financial position in each directorate, whoops, and it talks about the pressures in children first of £7.5 million, and technical finance and treasury insurance, which are total £8.2 million. And as it says, and I've said before, we know that the rest of the organisation has worked really hard to offset and mitigate those actions. The reports, and a part of the challenge this year was to continue to make this report as transparent and open as possible, and continuously try to improve it. And I think, you know, this report is in a very good place now. It talks about the pressures in adult social care, the hospital pressure, which is still a significant concern, given where we are in the, in the year, and of course, the issue with coronavirus. So we continue to work very hard through Anna, who does an excellent job in controlling the budget, and indeed has contributed significantly to an underspend. We know where the pressures are in children's, and the report covers these off quite, quite well and quite succinctly. So I have nothing further to add, other than, you know, it's quite an amazing consideration that we're down to a surplus of £29,000. And I'm very pleased and proud to present this report to Cabinet this afternoon. Thank you. So councillor Scrimshaw.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome the further improvement of the in-year budget position, which should give all members confidence that this year's budget will balance at the end of the year, which clearly will be a benefit to the financial position of the council as we move forward to the final year of this council. However, and I apologise, or rather I don't apologise, for repeating comments I've previously made, I feel it's important for Cabinet to realise there are potentially still some important consequences of where we're currently at. While the overall budget does balance, there's still a massive overspend, which has been referred to in children's of £7.5 million, although I accept that this has remained fairly stable now for some months. This overspend is made up in part of some of the original savings proposals in this year's budget not having been realised. For example, £2.9 million coming from non-delivery of staffing-related proposals, but also from extra demand pressures, both from an increase in numbers and an increase in average package costs, as well as other things. To an extent, this overspend has actually been kept down by mitigations within the children's directory itself, for example, not being able to use money put aside for wages that are not needed because of failure to recruitment of social workers. But in the main, other parts of the organisation are having to subsidise children's, in effect. Understanding this is important for two reasons. Firstly, because if these issues are not fixed next year, even if the overall budget balances, these pressures will be problematic for the new unitaries and the proposed new children's company. But also, it's important to understand that the proposed reinvestment next year, which is designed to allow for this, needs to be accurate. If the assumptions around those figures are found wanting, there could be some serious consequences pushed on into the future. But the most important consideration of these points is around how these pressures may be affecting the actual service that the council provides, with pressure on social workers' caseloads, for example, a reliance on temporary agency staff, and the knock-on effect from any reduced morale within the various teams. Balancing the budget on paper is one thing, but how it's done and the consequences are of equal importance. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Stanborough?
Thank you, Chair. So yes, you can, we can see the trajectory, can't we? This is the report at period nine. We're now reporting a projected underspend. I would expect that by the time we receive the outturn sometime in June, I think, we'll be seeing a much larger underspend on the year. So, look forward to seeing what that figure is at the time. I think, picking up on councillor Scrimshaw's point, there is a point about how the mitigations are, what mitigations are put in place for overspends, and what the sort of knock-on effect is on those. A number of the mitigations that are referred to in the report across various directorates are around vacancies, the holding of vacancies, keeping of posts vacant for a period of time. And that has got to be disruptive to service delivery, hasn't it? And surely that means that the people who would have been doing those jobs, whilst they're not doing them, it means, it will mean that the service delivered to the public will be less good as a result. I wonder if anybody on the Cabinet has a view as to whether that is the case, and if so, how desirable such mitigations are. Because clearly, what we don't... Because clearly what we don't want is a position where the effectiveness of the services we are delivering are, is, is impaired because of the need to make compensating savings in, in, on the in-year budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The first point I'll mention is about, well, we said about restriction on recruitment. These are not forced and vacancies are being filled. And that is the key to moving certainly children's, the children's director on. And I sit on our improvement board and I'm heartened that things are moving in the right direction. Councillor Baker nodding because we, we both sit and attend those meetings. And there's been a transformation over the last six months, I would say, or even shorter, four months, that HR and that whole function around recruitment of social workers is, is beginning to improve. And of course, if we approve the budget at council next week, there's an extra carrot and incentive there to, to help with that retention, which is, which is massive. So, um, one of the points councillor Grimshaw mentioned was about the stabilisation, stabilisation of the children's services in terms of their finances. And as, as Cabinet monitoring this through the year, we were very, very concerned. And we're pleased now to see that, that the finances, finances have stabilised, albeit there is a, um, there is a, there is an overspend. But as I've already mentioned, the, the rest of the council, the rest of the organisation is responded, has responded to, to deal with that. And we also know that we talked about knock-on pressures into next year, that we've got re-base lining of a lot of those directorate areas, including growth in all of them, to deal with any, any potential legacy issues. So I think Cabinet and I are generally pleased that, um, you know, well, we're very pleased that this budget is heading in the right direction and we look forward to hopefully that trajectory widening as we enter the last quarter of the, um, of the financial year. Is there any comments from Cabinet? Okay, Cabinet, are we happy to agree the report?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is item nine, which is the monthly capital report forecast outturn as a period nine for the financial year ending 31st of March 2020. I'm going to do this very quickly, but one, one thing I did want to say that although we are transitioning towards, um, local government reform, there's an awful lot going on here still in Northamptonshire with lots of investment in schools and that has to be recognised and applauded. So all the schemes are laid out. This is an update of the report that comes to us quite regularly. So I don't have anything further to add. Councillor Bone, did you want to mention the libraries?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a very quick update on where we're at with the, the libraries. And, um, we are starting to accelerate in terms of handover. On Saturday, we had a very positive morning at Earl's Barton. They're absolutely delighted with the way the community programme and the community support from NCC is for the libraries and extending it to other services. So I just wanted to reassure everyone that we're going in the right direction. Obviously, there's going to be the odd hiccup, but we are trying to keep as many of those libraries open, operational and diversified as, as, as soon as possible. And certainly that's our ambition before the year end. Thank you.
Thank you. Cabinet, are we happy to agree the report? Thank you. So we'll move on to the next item, which is item 10, which is the Northamptonshire Highway Services Contract Scrutiny Review. And I'll invite Mr and Mrs Taylor to come up and address Cabinet, if that's okay. Okay, welcome to our meeting this afternoon and we're happy to listen to what you've got to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for letting us address you. Our focus today is road safety and reducing road danger for the citizens of Northamptonshire. We agree with the recommendation of the Northamptonshire Highway Services Scrutiny Review and OPS Limited that a more appropriate separation of duties is needed between NCC and KIR WSP. NCC should be accountable for inspections and KIR WSP should be accountable for maintenance. However, there also needs to be a change of culture. We've been highlighting our concerns about inspection for 10 years and other than Jonathan Akins, no one has taken time to listen to us. We feel we've been dismissed as grieving parents because the issues we highlighted were ignored and left unaddressed. Our daughter Becky was killed in a car crash in 2008. She lost control of her car on a flooded road. We later found out the flood was caused by blocked cycle. At Becky's inquest, we were stunned by the paucity of the inspection regime and appalled by their lack of response to further addressing the flooding. Over the next two years, a same cycle regularly became blocked and flooded as a result of armed assistance in reporting this defect, NCC installed a double gully. These blockages were not reported to their inspectors. The Code of Practice for Well-Maintained Roads states that inspections should be performed from a slow-moving vehicle. There is no equivalent of Ofsted or CQC to enforce the Code of Practice. And despite legal precedent, they still believe it is inappropriate to inspect at 45 miles per hour. Over the last 10 years, we've regularly reported flooding and blocked gullies. And whilst we've been assured of puppets that have been made, they have never materialised or faded away. By 2014, our correspondent was going through a spock. At the end of 2014, we reported 50 blocked gullies between Els Barton and Wilby and we exhausted the complaints process and were unable to get this considered by the local government office. In July and August, we reported block gullies on the C188, A58 and A4500. You've got pictures of those. Due to the very high number of gullies identified, we followed this up with a complaint and we discovered that over 70% of the gullies in the county had not been cleared as part of the annual clean cleansing cycle. We had two concerns. Firstly, the inspections were still not effective. And secondly, there seemed to be no urgency in rectifying the delays to the, to the, the gullies. We never received a satisfactory answer and we again exhausted the NCC's complaint process. Again, you've got a copy of our final letter. In 2018, 31 people were killed on the roads in Northamptonshire and the rise of 288 people would change forever. The Road Safety Foundation produced a report that showed that roads in the East Midlands are two-thirds more dangerous than the roads in the West Midlands. That's not down to vehicles, it's not down to usage, it's down to the roads, is their conclusion. The safe system approach considers people's vulnerability to serious injuries in road conditions and has five pillars, of which one of them is road safety. Preventing a, a, a road death, the value of that is 2.2 million pounds. A lifetime of care can cost over 20 million pounds. Britain loses 1% to 2% of its GDP in road crashes every year. The 36 billion lost would fund the GP service and the primary schools in this country.
Thank you. Mrs Taylor, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm just, I'm just here to add support.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for coming and talking to us and we'll note, certainly note what you, what you've said. So thank you.
Appreciate having the time to speak today as well, so thank you.
Thank you. So if I could ask councillor Ekins, who is the Chair of the Scrutiny Review, just to come up to the mic, if that's okay. Thank you, councillor Ekins. And again, I sat through your presentation at scrutiny last week, which was quite exhaustive, exhaustive in a nice way, I would say. Is there anything you'd like to point out to Cabinet today?
Just a couple of things, Chair. Thank you for allowing me to attend today and present you the report for your considerations and hopefully actions on some of the recommendations, which I'm pleased to say that I understand some of those recommended actions are already being undertaken by the NCC, which is quite good. In addition, Chair, if I may, is in addition to the sources of evidence that are actually in the report, we had quite a few discussions and meetings, not limited to members of the public, as you've just heard from Mr and Mrs Taylor. And I thank them for attending in very difficult circumstances, personal circumstances for them today. And I thank them for taking the time to come and, and present to yourselves. We had members of the public come, we had members of KIR WSP, the contractors, contractors outside of KIR WSP in, in other areas. We had from other providers, experts in construction and what have you. All of these, a lot of these voluntarily made contact with us as a working group to give us their input and highlighting some of the issues that we have been experiencing over the term of the contract. As I've said, I'm, I'm presenting it today to yourselves and hopefully most of the recommendations. We had an in-depth discussion at scrutiny, as we said last week and as you were there, which is good. We'd just like to see that the recommendations are taken on board and that we can improve the highways, continually improve the highways. I know it's improving now from what it has been. And as long as that continuance continues, we will still be monitoring it over the, the next year because we're still here for another year and I'm pretty sure that we will be reporting in due course.
Thank you, councillor Ekins. Councillor Smith, this is obviously your directorate. Did you want to offer a response?
Yeah, thank you. So as Cabinet member responsible for highways, I would like to welcome this report and thank the Chair and all the members and everyone that has, you know, been involved in this overview scrutiny committee and for the sterling work that they've all done. It's a very useful document that you've produced. And as my fellow Cabinet members will also be aware, it was recognised some time ago that the contract management arrangements for our highways contractor could be better. And we've been working with OPS consultants to identify which ways we can improve. We have kept scrutiny members updated on this progress also. And we're currently in negotiations to extend our current highways contract to cover us until the two new contracts can be procured for the two new upcoming unitary councils. As part of those negotiations, we intend to strengthen our in-house client team by repatriating some of the key staff that we would believe would sit more appropriately on the client side of that contract. I expect to be able to update members of this cabinet and the overview and scrutiny on the work and of the repatriation. New contract management arrangements also will be updated on and will give up an update on other valuable suggestions that's been made and picked up in your report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so cabinets are asked to consider the recommended areas for action set out in the, in the scrutiny review and agree to provide a written response to the overview and scrutiny committee identifying actions it proposes to take as a result of the scrutiny view and the time scales for this. And I know councillor Smith has, has got this in hand. Sorry, councillor Scott.
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to thank councillor Ekins and his working group for this report, which was, I think, long overdue. And I'd also like to thank Mr Taylor for a number of the points you outlined, many of which I agree with. But I really wanted to just emphasise some of the points that are made in the report. And the first one is on page 77, where it says, in light of this, the working group recommends that a key priority moving forward from this point should be to strengthen arrangements for contract monitoring, quality assurance and value for money. When this arrangement first came about, we opposed it because we didn't believe in the Chinese wall principle which is operating. And I'm very glad to see that that's being reversed, dealing with it properly and openly as it should have been from the start. And at all, of course, as you say in the report, and as I think has been acknowledged by the portfolio holder, will be more staff being recruited to fill those positions to carry out that work. In terms of the new technology, again, an area I think that's long overdue. One of the things that wasn't highlighted, but I think is highly important, is utilising the new types of machinery available, some of which has been employed by the authority for some years. And dealing with potholes so that you get a semi-permanent repair as opposed to a patch. It seems to be a logical way of catching up with the backlog. That's an area that hasn't really been highlighted. You know, because it's got to be an area that's addressed, the backlog keeps getting bigger and bigger. And we've got to have a system that works to minimise that. I don't think they'll ever eliminate it, but certainly cuts it down to a very small number. The last point is protecting and prioritising budget for highway maintenance. Year after year, we've seen cuts in this budget because of the need for other departments to carry out the spending they have, we've had to make. And this has got to stop at some point. It's already at a very low level. We made cuts years ago, which we strongly opposed. And with thankfully, the commissioners put back in last year. Some of it, some of it has been put back in this year. The gritting point, which was made earlier by councillor Stambro, is nowhere I probably agree with. It shouldn't be going backward, but it should be going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Smith, is there anything you'd like to come back on there?
Yeah, I could just, basically for councillor Scott's staff were going to be repatriated under that agreement, not re-employed. So a little bit of a difference there. New machines, you know, getting rid of all the potholes in the ideal world. Yes, we would like no potholes, but they are going to appear. But the, 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 the new machinery and the new technology in use will definitely make a massive dent into that backlog of potholes that are appearing. Highways budget cuts, as you say, I, I sort of tend to disagree with. It's more savings down to sort of some forward thinking by individuals and embracing technology that's out there that wasn't necessarily out there five years ago. So, you know, the Cow, the council is always forward looking at ways of trying to embrace technology to get more for our buckers to say. So just for that, for your information really. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. And just another point, compared to our statistical neighbours, we still spend more on gritting and the gritting routes. Of course, we'd like to grip the whole route comprehensively, but we have to make decisions and cut our cloth accordingly. So I'll thank scrutiny again, thank Mr and Mrs Taylor and other people that have contributed to the, to the review. We note the report and we want to see a better service on behalf of the residents of Northamptonshire as we move forward. I think there's some good learning in this report that we can take forward. So Cabinet, are we happy to agree the recommendations? Thank you. So item 11 is supporting economic growth and better outcomes through digital infrastructure, ultra-low emission charging, harnessing technology and construction skills. So councillor Smithers.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, this is quite a long sort of report. It's a broad ranging report which sets out the steps that NCC is taking and proposes to take to support infrastructure-led growth with a focus on digital connectivity and projects to support ultra-low admission, charging and skills development. These include continued working with partners and telecoms industries through the Superfast Northamptonshire project to increase full fibre coverage of broadband to 40% by December 2023. This is, this will ensure that we are one of, one of the, or if not the best digitally connected counties in the UK. Supporting the successful Digital Northampton initiative through approvals to submit a full application for half a million ERD funding will be, deliver vital support to the local digital businesses through boot camps, events and enhanced web resources supporting local collaboration and grant programmes. Progressing a progress for Digital Hub at the Central Library as part of a wider transformation of the building, a pipeline bid has been submitted to SEMLEP for phase one of this existing project. And we will be working towards closely with all of our partners, including Northampton forwards to realise this initiative. We wish to develop plans to explore various funding opportunities where we can get a digital outcome which will help the communities. The aim is to enable access to cutting-edge technology to support digital innovation and learning in the businesses and in homes. The installation on the on-street points for plug-in charging vehicles through the VPAC H2 project targets areas where there is limited or no on-street parking. Refunding on Innsborough, UK. This project will use Virgin Media's existing powered street cabinets to minimise the disruption through streetworks that are quite often caused when digging up and putting in new utility trenches and so on. So this means that this can be rolled out pretty quickly with minimal fuss. The promotion of an active transport choice through the Smartmove Northamptonshire project with the development of an e-bike loan scheme and the launch of a journey planning app utilises the latest alignment reality AR technology used in the gaming industry. Moving on to the Northamptonshire Construction Skills Programme, an NCC-led programme which delivers training in delivers training in construction skills to 500 learners across the county, addressing a local skills gap and supporting growth. To date, 144 people have completed training and are now in job-ready positions. So, you know, it's a fantastic achievement to get those people into that position. More than 30 of them have already taken up new employment locally as well. So the recommendations are, as agreed, one, to approach outline in the report to increase full fibre coverage, including the target of 40% coverage by December 2023. Two, that we welcome the approval of the Digital Northampton European Regional Development Fund Priority Axis II outline bid and agrees that the full application to be submitted. Three, support the concept of a digital hub at the central library in Northampton as part of a wider transformation of the building. Four, supports the proactive work with ULEB charge point operators, including through the VPAC II programme, to enable the installation of charging points and for plug-in electric vehicles and introduce associated parking bays with the relevant restrictions on those. Five, to endorse the proposals to encourage active travel via public transport through the new initiatives. Six, welcome the outcomes and outputs achieved to date through the Northamptonshire Construction Skill Centre Programme and agree that operation, opportunity should be explored to extend the initiative. And seven, to delegate authority to the interim director of place and commercial liaison with the CAA, cabinet member, myself, to submit the required funding applications and authorise the requirements and agreements, including the contractual variations, to deliver the agreed recommendations.
Thank you. councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I welcome this report. Just like to, I was quite amused by page seven right at the bottom, using European funding after the period we've been through. But it's as welcome as much as we can, I guess, while we can. Going on to 4.3, the charging points around our streets, our towns. Yeah, I had a letter about this because my street is one of them where they're proposing to put two parking bays and charging units. I'd certainly welcome that. I think, as everyone knows, it's an area we've got to speed up enormously. There's only about, I think, it is a point between point one and point, no, one and two percent of electric cars being bought currently. But Northamptonshire is in the lead on that, so we need to keep pace with it. Going on to, an item highlighted, which doesn't seem to be here, Northamptonshire Construction Skills Programme. Again, an area I'd probably support, training's always been, an area I've been interested in from an early age and having done an apprenticeship myself. I'm a bit unsure about the level of training you're talking about here. What it seems to be like is getting people job-ready with, whether it be mathematical skills or English skills, measurement skills, things like that to be job-ready. It's very basic training. Yeah, so presumably people go on from that on to apprenticeship courses or adult apprenticeship courses or whatever the employer wants to put them through. The problem we've got, though, in Northamptonshire is our FE colleges. They're not up to the mark. They're either inadequate or requiring improvement. One went to good for, I think it was six months, and then dropped down again. Yet it's an area we've really got to grasp. I've spoken about it on a number of occasions. If we want to grow as a county, we've got to have the skills within the county to be able to do that effectively, to be able to attract companies. Yeah, and we're not doing that. We need to put more effort into that. And I ask the leader to put that effort in through the LEP, through SEMLEP, because that's where the funding tends to come from. It tends to go to FE colleges and they're not performing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. councillor Stanbury.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to also talk about the particular proposal around ultra-low emission vehicles or electric vehicles, the rest of us, because this is a proposal which is really to be welcomed, supported wholeheartedly by myself and my group colleague, I can assure you. And of course, the only question is, what's the aspiration? Can we do more? You know, so for instance, the number of sites that are originally planned under what's been proposed here, not quite sure, can't quite work it out, might be 170 charging points, might be 85 locations. Sounds like a lot if it's 600 in total for the whole project and it's across 10 areas, but it might be. What's the aspiration already? For instance, I'm hearing that people in towns where we're not proposing currently under this proposal to install charging points are saying, well, what about us? People in Houndle, for instance. Is there anything else this authority can do while it's still in existence to facilitate further installation? Maybe the cabinet member has some knowledge of some other things we might be able to do. Those things would be really welcome. And if there isn't anything we can do, perhaps we can at least start the ball rolling for the unitaries to pick up on this project and do more because this is undoubtedly the future and it would be great if we laid a good foundation as an authority. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Lawman.
Familiar theme, as somebody who's just obtained a hybrid vehicle, to find that in a town of 45,000 people in Wellingborough, there is not a single public charging point. So my plea is that, and I understand there's a consultation going out on a number of sites, none of which are in Wellingborough. So my plea is that if we could please investigate whether that is possible to include Wellingborough. I'm quite happy to show councillor Smithers some suitable sites on and off-road that we could look at if he wishes. But I think that Wellingborough deserves to have at least some inclusion in this if possible, please.
Okay, thank you. councillor Smithers, did you like to respond to some of those points?
Absolutely, thank you, Chair. So to, I'll go down in order, councillor Scott. Regarding the irony about EU money, EU money is still very welcomed. So, yes. Construction Skills Hub, I think you sort of misunderstood what they're actually doing there. These are like two-year full-on apprenticeships, so you're giving people the ability to train in skills such as being electricians, being, you know, woodworkers, chippies, as they call them, in the trade and so on. And a great example of that actually working within our local communities is in Wellingborough with the new prison that's being built. Along with the partners there, we are training many individuals there, utilising this process. And as I said, 30-odd of these people have already been taken on and taken positions within the community and are now contributing to the community. And you are right in the fact that there is the basic skills part of English maths and so on, but it's addressing a fundamental issue of a skill shortage in the county, which this will hopefully sort moving forward because it's a very successful project thus far. councillor Stanbury, electric charging points, the aspiration for electric charging points has to be massive because, you know, we need to deliver on this. I mean, we have to move away from fossil fuels and just recently Boris Johnson had moved the target from 2040 to 2035 to be carbon neutral for the country. So the pressure is on these councils and all, you know, councils that come after us and so on. So, you know, trust me, we are working very, very hard on this part. councillor Lawman, yes, your good lady wife last night bent my ear for about 15 minutes about that very subject that you brought up. And I have agreed to come to Wellingborough and look at points and feed that back to officers. So, yes, I just heard myself come back through a microphone. And I've asked for an officer to come along and have a look and see what, you know, see what can be done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I accept that challenge around our colleges. You know, we want the best outcomes, they are key stakeholders. And just the point is that Northampton College is still rated good according to the Ofsted website and we support them as stakeholders. And indeed, I participated in one of their Ofsted inspections as a stakeholder. And of course, I'll do what I can at the Board of SEMLEP. So cabinet, are we happy to agree the recommendations?
Yeah.
Thank you. So we move on to item 12, adult weight management services, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. The report is before you, obviously, but I wanted to just comment generally on preventative services in the county and to point out that this is another, we often get criticised for not having much prevention within our, you know, within our remit, but this is another great example of public health who have stepped up to the plate on many levels with the prevention agenda. And this is another fine example of that. I also look forward to the Labour Party's costings and their financial plan next week. So we look forward to that with bated breath. That's on another subject, but I thought I'd just get that in while I had the chance. This is a very interesting paper and you've all read it, I'm sure, but this builds on the current work that public health are already doing around weight management. The recommendations are that the delegated authority be given to the Director of Public Health in consultation with me, the cabinet member for adult social care and public health, to procure tier-two weight management services through an open tender process. And also another delegated authority to develop and procure tier-one community-based services to support people to address the causes of obesity. I think we can all agree that reducing obesity levels in any population, but certainly in our population as anywhere else, has to remain a priority for this council. Overweight and obesity is leading to a lot of loss of life and disability in Northamptonshire as well as it is everywhere else. Around two in every three adults in the county are overweight or obese, and this equates to quite a staggering number of people, to 309,425 adults aged between 16 and 64 years and 89,240,000 adults aged 65 and over. So it is a big problem. Public health, of course, are already stepping up to the plate with their existing weight management services. And this, and the current provision has done very well, but we feel it could do better. In fact, the investment comes to an end on September 30th, 2020. The current contract value is 170. The proposed new contract will actually be £250,000 a year. So again, we are putting more funding into prevention. And I must thank the Director of Public Health for her hard work with all these new schemes that are coming forward because they will change the way Northamptonshire looks over the next few years, particularly as we head towards a unitary. So the proposal is to have a new dynamic purchasing system for weight management services, which would start from the 1st of October 2020 and would run until the 30th of September 2022, with an option to extend for a further two years and maybe another one year and another one year, so four years in total perhaps. So it's a million-pound contract in total. And this will take various forms, so there'll obviously be, will be asking for people to join various things that we're doing. And we will also reach out to the community for them to do certain things. And there'll be things like growing and cooking skills, which are always good to know about, especially if you're trying to lose weight. Local residents have told us that these type of services would enable them to live much healthier lives. And I think there's no point in providing a service if it's not tailored to the people that would benefit from the service. So I think it'll be very interesting to see going forward how it will work, but I'm sure it will be a great success. So I'm very happy to commend this report to the cabinet. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Morris. Got councillor Stone?
The increased budget, which is of course, you know, going to positively impact people in the real time, but it's also going to act as a preventative measure, isn't it, further down the line? It's very, very welcome. But I do have some questions to ask. So one of them is about the relationship between being overweight, obese and diabetes because it would be daft, wouldn't it, to have two strategies that kind of pulled against each other instead of, I've just wondered what the relationship was, if there is a relationship, and if the strategies at some point were going to come together. I'm curious about why our rates for overweightness and obesity are higher than the rest of England or the average for England. I'm curious about why with this extra money, we're still thinking about commissioning and not co-designing because I thought we'd agreed as an authority that we would begin I'd like to know if we know why the dropout rates for these kind of services are so high. 36% is rather high, isn't it? So I'm wondering why that is. I'm also a bit concerned about the lack of take-up by men. And I'm glad that the different needs of BAME communities have been highlighted, but I'm just wondering what difference it's going to be made in offering the services to BAME communities. And I'm particularly concerned because we know a lot of BAME organisations have experienced huge budget cuts. And so they would be natural partners in a programme like this, but maybe their organisations have been made too fragile to be able to make the contribution that they could have made even two or three years ago. And then I'm also wondering if part of the scheme will be about peer education because I know that all the research shows that when we're looking at behavioural change, it's often peer education that does the trick in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Morris, would you like to come back on, the points you can come back on there?
Yes, I will attempt to do that. And if I miss any, do let me know and I'll come back to you afterwards if you remind me what they are. Obviously, diabetes plays a big part in obesity and there's going to be a, which, one thing I didn't say is that we're going to try and develop a whole system approach to obesity, which I would imagine has diabetes as part of that. And obviously, one of the best ways to prevent diabetes is to lose weight. So this hopefully will have a direct effect on the number of people with diabetes at the same time. I think some of the other points you make, the dropout rate, the lack of take-up, that's one of the reasons, I presume, for a redesign of this whole approach. And we've spoken to the people and the providers who might include some of the people in the communities that you're referring to, who would deliver some of these services for us, presumably. And that's the whole point of this redesign, is to have a look at all those things. So I'm not, I'm not, that's not a direct answer, but this new approach hopefully will answer those problems in time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Morris. Cabinet, are we happy to agree the recommendations? Thank you. So we move on to item 13, which is fees and charges policy for adult social care. It's councillor Morris again.
Thank you, Chair. You will recall that this has been before us on a number of occasions, so we have discussed quite in-depth the changes that we're proposing. This is coming back following the considerable consultation period that we've had on the changes that are proposed and therefore is now moving forward to enact those proposals. So approval is sought for the following: to replace the fair contributions policy with the fees and charges policy, a revision of the existing policy, including charging rules for residential care homes, top-up payments and other flat-rate charges. The new policy incorporates the proposals consulted on, as I've already mentioned. The recommendation is to proceed with the proposals and to be able to implement, in order to implement them from the 1st of April 2020, we need the cabinet to agree them. This is important to note, all affected people will be written to confirming the outcome of the consultation. This will also provide further details on how they may be affected by the changes. Some of those people have already been consulted with anyway, so we will be indeed giving them further information that they may or may not have had. Any people who feel that they will struggle financially as a result of the changes will be given additional support from the council. It's very important to note that these changes are not there to cause financial hardship for people, they are there to bring us up to the same rules and regulations as other councils have around the country. We're basically levelling it up with them and we are not trying to put people in a worse position than they were before. As we know, it affects residential colleges, the single rate of standard disability-related expenditure and older person standard income disregard. I'm not going to go into huge detail on those figures and facts because we've already, I think, discussed them and they're all in the paper. So I would... So I would propose to put the paper before Cabinet Chair, and obviously answer any questions.
Thank you councillor Stone.
We have discussed this at previous cabinets, haven't we? And my understanding is that these proposals are going to lever in nearly 800,000 additional monies. And for me, I have to say, that really does smack of asking the vulnerable to be responsible for easing the funding pressures in this service, so I don't feel at all easy about that. One of the things that I keep being told by people who receive services is that when all their needs are taken into account and budgets allocated against their needs, they're often not left with any money to spend on context-dependent needs, if you see what I mean. So they have their basic needs, budgets allocated for that. But if it's a month of, I don't know, where they need to be out and about more because of family celebrations, or whatever it is, they want to go on a course, or something happens in their home that is going to be expensive, they find that they have no additional finance to meet those very individual needs. And that makes me question as well then, why we are moving to a one-size-fits-all kind of thing? Because I thought that we had decided a long time ago now that we would treat everybody as individuals and we would respect their individual needs. So this feels a bit like, you know, homogenising the system and making an assumption that everybody is the same. I understand there are winners as well as losers, but there are many more losers than there are winners in this system.
Thank you councillor Morris.
Thank you. I think I did say that obviously we're moving to be within the same rules as the Department of Health actually set out, so we're not actually doing anything that no one else is already doing. And I've already said that we are not trying to make people worse off as a result of this, and we have put in place measures to help people to come to terms with these changes, as well as perhaps appeal those changes should they be required. I'm very confident that this is the right thing to do, and that no one will end up significantly worse off as a result of these changes. I also wanted to point out that we have done a full equalities impact assessment on this whole proposal, as we have for all our proposals today, and those are available if anyone would like to see them. I can't really add anything than that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Morris. So Cabinet, I'm comfortable with this paper, and last Cabinet, particularly to note the equalities impact assessment and move that we accept the recommendations. Thank you. So item 14, the LGSS ERP Gold Cloud Hosting Procurement. So councillor Naiden-Hawley is going to present this paper. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. You have the report in front of you, Chair and Cabinet. I'm presenting this item on behalf of councillor Longley today, who is actually not here as we know. And any questions that you have going forward, that you might have, will be answered upon his return. I'll just give you a little bit of the background of the reason for this. In April 2018, LGSS went live with the ERP Gold, which is a customised and LGS-branded implementation of ERP software called Unit 4 Business World. Shared all LGSS partners, ERP Gold underpins key operational areas such as accounts payable, accounts receivable, HR and payroll, and financial reporting. With the scale of use, complexity and reliability required of ERP Gold, we must ensure that our medium and long-term strategy for managing the system is flexible, secure, robust, cost-effective and agile. Following a review of corporate IT strategy and operational challenges experienced, a comprehensive options analysis and soft marketing testing with potential suppliers was undertaken, and we believe that moving ERP Gold to cloud hosting is the best way to ensure this. Cloud hosting is a well-established strategy and approach, now deemed industry standard and the default approach in government policy for new technology decisions. The ERP Gold system won't be replaced, but the application and database moves to the cloud-hosted infrastructure with a comprehensive and robust managed service contract from a supplier with significant experience and specialism in the hosting and technical support of this type of business critical system. The supplier will be required to use data centres based in the UK, physically separated to provide a high level of disaster recovery, and with services managed to high standards and independently accredited. Therefore Cabinet, I'm asking today to approve a new cloud hosting service for ERP Gold, and grant delegated authority to the Managing Director of LGSS in consultation with the finance portfolio holder to make an award to the successful provider.
Thank you councillor Naiden-Hawley. Councillor Scott?
Thank you Mr Chair. I just have a fairly simple question really. Is IT systems renowned for running over cost? Will this one be the same? We're told that the current platform costs us £215,000 per annum, and they should reduce it to £185,000, but the total cost of the provision for the term of the contract, up to four years, is £714,000. So my question is, how confident are we that that will not overrun?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Naiden-Hawley, are you able to respond to that?
I can respond in the fact that all the meetings that I've attended have assured me that that is one of the key things that are going to be monitored going forward, and we're looking for value for money and the best system that we can provide it going forward to the unitary local government reform. But anything else, I will get that information to you councillor.
Okay, thank you. Cabinet, are we happy to agree the recommendation? Thank you. So item 15, Integrated Children's Service Public Health and the CCG. So I believe councillor Morris is going to present this, and then councillor Baker offers some comment.
Thank you Chair. This obviously has a natural synergy between the two directorates, but as it's public health funded in part, it makes sense for me to present it with Fiona making suitable comments, which I'm sure she will. So this is about integrating children's services with the extension of the Section 75 agreement, which already provides various 0-19 nursing services. It's been very successful to date, as far as I'm aware, and this is basically, yet again, another example of a great, of funding being found, further funding being found for prevention. Again, I mean, it's another clear example of that, and coming from the public health realm. This is, the funding is quite significant on this, it's 30 million over four years. So this is not to be sniffed at, as they say. And the sources of funding, again, a very good example of working together, public health working together with our colleagues at the CCGs. So the funding is from our public grant, there's about 12 million, and from the CCGs there's about 18 million. The start date would be April 21st, April 2021, sorry, until March 2025. So the recommendation is approval is sought for delegated authority to be given to the Director of Public Health to secure an arrangement for the delivery of the public health 0-19 nursing service through the extension of an existing Section 75 agreement with NHS Partners to March 2025, with an option to extend for up to a further four years, therefore making a total of eight years. I think we can all applaud this, this is going to be an amazing piece of work going forward, particularly into unitaries, and I think will certainly help with the prevention agenda that will hopefully be front and centre of those new unitaries. So at the moment, this offers, this is an opportunity to relook at this service, so we currently fund through public health various 0-19 public health nursing services. It's a mandated service, and it consists of health visiting, school nursing, family nurse partnership and breastfeeding services. So this is, the current services delivers various services across the piece, and the objectives are fairly clear. The key objectives are for every child in Northamptonshire to get the best start in life that is possible, and I think we can say that's something that we would all agree with. The key outputs are to improve child and young person population health outcomes, and reduce health inequalities across Northamptonshire, deliver the child requirements of the Healthy Child Programme, Northamptonshire Healthcare and Wellbeing Plan, and overall objectives the NHCP. Provide best use of limited resources by working together, and this is a really good example of that, to deliver services to the same child population. Support providers through increased system stability, enabling shared commitment to transformation. Reframe joined-up working relationships across commissioning organisations and wider stakeholders in support of their aspirations. To provide scope for a more integrated, aligned and robust safeguarding approach, which again we would all agree with, with integrated services allowing for early identification of need and multidisciplinary working, with the aim of improving the country's safeguarding position and reducing family breakdown. The case for extension is very clear, and I recommend this paper to the Cabinet. I'm sure councillor Baker will have something to add.
Thank you councillor Morris.
Thank you councillor Morris, I think you've given us a very clear overview and haven't left me very much to say on the subject. But I just did want to point out that this is another very good example of the partnership working that we are, have been in before with this, but we are moving through the whole of our services for adults and childrens to work together with the CCGs so that we are covering all of the needs of our looked-after people with health and social care. The only thing I wanted to point out was that there are also the increase in age group from 0-25 now, to bring us in line with the government guidelines that we should take care of young people up until the age of 25. So this addresses all of those, and thank you very much, and I recommend it.
Thank you. We've got councillor Roy.
Thank you for this, and thank you for the paper. The paper was issued late, and I just wondered in situations like this, given that the members of the public only have a limited time to register to speak on such matters, when papers are issued late, could there be more flexibility to allow members of the public to actually contribute to this really important issue, really important in terms of partnership work? But I just think we should be doing things where we're encouraging this. I want to particularly thank councillor Baker, who has been incredibly responsive to me in my requests for information, particularly on other integrated matters, including things like send transport for school. But we really do need to be more responsive to the public, particularly in terms of emails being responded to. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morris, did you want to come back on any of that?
I wasn't aware of the paper being issued late, but that might be because I wasn't here. I was on holiday when it was issued. But obviously, I will take account of that, and if, sometimes they, unfortunately, it is unfortunate, but these papers can only be produced late because of the information and the CCGs, we'll blame them for that. Partnership working involves getting everyone to sign things off, and quite often that can be more complex than perhaps if it was just one organisation, shall I put it that way? But we will note that, and obviously, we will try and get them published as quickly as we can. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, the timing list of papers going out is always something we like to keep an eye on, so we acknowledge that, and so if we can keep trying to improve. Is there anything you would like to say councillor?
I just wanted to say, as councillor Roy did allude to, we're more than happy to have questions afterwards anyway, and we'll always do the best that we can to answer them.
Okay Cabinet, we're happy to agree the report. Okay, item 16, the community safety strategies. So we've got domestic abuse, tackling antisocial behaviour, action against hate strategy and preventing radicalisation and extremism strategy. Wow. Okay councillor Naiden-Hawley.
Thank you Chair. You have the comprehensive reports in front of you, Chair and Cabinet. I'll just give you a bit of the purpose of the report and the background. So the paper is presenting four really extremely important strategies that have been developed and agreed by the Northamptonshire Community Safety Board for approval by NCC Cabinet. These strategies are intended to improve the coordination and effectiveness of multi-agency activity in relation to key community safety issues, and those are domestic abuse and sexual violence strategy, tackling antisocial behaviour strategy, action against hate strategy and preventing radicalisation and extremism strategy. One of the main functions of the Community Safety Board Chair is to improve multi-agency working on community safety issues in order to improve both the effectiveness and value provided by various community safety activity. The development of agreed strategies in relation to these issues is a core part of this work, as it ensures that the relevant stakeholders are working together to address issues and resolve problems, while at the same time ensuring that single agency decisions do not create unforeseen gaps in the overall provision. Northamptonshire County Council is one of the core members of this board, and its officers have been fully involved in the development of the four strategies included in this Cabinet paper. As well as supporting improvements in local service provision, having current effective and agreed strategies enables agencies within Northamptonshire to bid for additional central government grant funding. The attached strategies have been developed to reflect the latest national policy and guidance, as well as the specific challenges faced by Northamptonshire's communities. The strategies have also sought to enhance and improve the role of prevention activity and reduce acute demand, which we're always trying to work on. The strategy includes work to develop targeted prevention and early intervention activity to help combat the escalation of domestic abuse within households and enable families to find the right solution. Often, the perpetrators of domestic abuse are repeat offenders, and so central to this strategy is to ensure there is much better awareness and reporting of abuse, and that where perpetrators are identified, there are systems to deal with them effectively. The previous strategy in this area lapsed, and the absence of an agreed strategy harmed Northamptonshire's bid for grant funding in 2019. There is a strong emphasis on early intervention, which I'm really pleased to see, and seeking to work with communities to address the causes of antisocial behaviour. This includes looking at the individual circumstances of repeat offenders. The strategy aims to stop people from becoming terrorists or supporting terrorism, and to support the rehabilitation and disengagement of those already involved in terrorism. Cabinet, I basically just want you to agree to the strategies in the four reports and approve the Safety Board being notified of the council's approval. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Naiden-Hawley. So we've got councillor Stanborough.
Just want to welcome these documents, in particular, the Northamptonshire Domestic Abuse and Sexual Violence Strategy. I sincerely hope that that particular strategy delivers what it sets out to deliver, because on reading it, and particularly reading the section that is either on page 15 or page 25, depending on which page numbers you're looking at, on the local context and some of the statistics are just truly appalling. You know, was it 36% of all recorded violent crimes are domestic abuse offences? We've got 16,139 incidents between September 17 and September 18, nearly 14,500 of those children were found to be present. Absolutely appalling. So, you know, I really hope that the strategy can deliver a sustained reduction in those figures, because it can't be anything but good for the people involved, but also for Northamptonshire Police, because this will free up their time, if the number of incidents are reduced, to do the other things we'd like them to do. So wholeheartedly in support and look forward to delivery on the strategy. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Roy?
I really welcome the section in relation to the domestic abuse and sexual violence strategy that focuses on strategy that focuses on the issues relating to FGM and the particular evidence that is there around Northamptonshire being one of eight places in the country with higher than level, higher levels of reported abuse. I know from Freedom Information Act requests that I’ve put my info myself to both Northampton General Hospital and Kettering General Hospital, that these are likely to be depressed figures because there’s clear issues around under-reporting particularly in North and Northamptonshire. I’m concerned about the fact that even about a year and a half ago, there was substantially more investment by the county council in really progressive measures around bringing communities together on that safeguarding agenda and I’m concerned that that level of activity should remain. It’s also concerning that the Children’s Safeguarding Board have no longer got their FGM subgroup, so these are things that I’d like the portfolio holder to take account of. Also in terms of the action against hate strategy, this is very welcome particularly since the previous strategy was pre-Brexit and that’s had a major influence on the levels of hate right across the country, not only in Northamptonshire. I am disappointed to see that although there’s a focus on prevention and working with communities, that actually the key stakeholders don’t seem to be integral within that. You’ve got the pull-out-and-pin-up sheet at the back, but that’s the only point that you actually took. There is a discussion about key stakeholders in the voluntary sector, many of whom have had substantial cuts to funding, declare an interest, work for Northamptonshire Rights and Equality Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nadine Hawley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I’d like to thank councillor Stanbrath and Roy for their comments about welcoming the report, but going further on, oh, sorry.
I haven’t got you down on the list.
May I speak?
Very briefly.
I shouldn’t be.
You can speak briefly.
I too wanted to welcome the fact that we’ve got all these strategies and I’m particularly delighted with the domestic violence one because I’m very aware of what happened when we didn’t have one, but I wanted to make a couple of points, if that’s okay, I’ll be as quick as I can. The strategy, welcome as it is, doesn’t actually address any of the structural reasons that produces domestic violence and sexual abuse and I think that’s an omission. So if you look for example at the gender pay gap, poverty is one of the reasons that women are so particularly vulnerable and I think it would be good to strengthen the strategy by reference to some of those structural issues. It says in the preface that the strategy isn’t going to address the particular needs of BAME groups for example, but we have a huge expertise in the country around those issues that we can draw on very easily and that’s the Southall Black Sisters who have been in business since 1975 and I think incorporating some of their knowledge and their expertise and their strategies in this strategy would help strengthen that. I think it’s really important to acknowledge anybody can be the victim of abuse, but on the same, in the same light, I think we need to acknowledge that a lot of domestic abuse and sexual violence is gendered. If you look at the sexual abuse experienced by men, 20% of all abuse reported is the victims are men. Within those figures, a third of those men are victims of women who are retaliating after years and years and years of their own abuse. A third of those men are involved in same-sex relationships and only a third of those men are the victims of women being abusive. I think it’s really important for us to understand all these nuances so that we can better address the absolute issues. On the hate crime and the preventing of radicalisation, can I say that my experience of all of that is that marginalised groups are the most likely to become groomed in terms of radicalisation and I, when I was young, I witnessed that because I saw lots of white working-class marginalised youths groomed by right-wing fascist gangs. And I’m very mindful of the fact that marginalised groups in our country are often Muslim groups. I go to all the open days in all the mosques, I never see anybody from the county council there, I very rarely see anybody from the county council there. I think stopping that marginalisation should be part of the strategy as well. And in terms of hate crime, can I just say, leading from the top is always a really good strategy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Nadine Hawley?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I’d like to just thank councillor Stanbrath, councillor Roy and councillor Stone for their comments and I think what we’ve got to bear in mind that this is a work in progress, everything starts from a beginning and it’s about, yes, we’d like to take everybody’s opinion on board and we will do going forward. I’d like to say that whether those statistics are actually true or not, I don’t know because I don’t have that information, but I’d like to bring in the Director of Corporate Services to answer some of the questions.
Just to say that Cabinet...
Sorry?
Thank you. The strategies have been developed and they’re now all being worked up into action plans, so I’ll take your feedback into that process. And so they are, in terms of delivery, they are a work in progress. I think we are, we’re happy that the statistics are accurate and obviously we’ve got more statistics for the last year. In terms of the issue about reducing domestic incidents, that’s always a challenge because actually part of the strategy is about increasing reporting and people feeling confident enough to report, so additional reporting is one of the reasons that numbers have gone up and what we need to focus on is actually reducing the amount of repeat victimisation and people, you know, becoming repeat victims. But as councillor Nadine Hawley said, it is definitely a work in progress. Just to pick up the issue about the FGM subgroup, there is now a county-wide domestic abuse and sexual violence working group at a strategic level and all the issues around domestic abuse and sexual violence are being dealt with through that forum including FGM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to comment, Sandra? No? Okay. I just want to say I recognise how really important these four documents are to have the right strategies in place and recognise that focus on prevention and community which is, that should be at the core of a lot of things we’ve actually talked about this afternoon. I just want to point out to Cabinet on page 15 that this strategy is dedicated to the memory of councillor Mary Butcher, who championed victims of domestic abuse across Northamptonshire. I just think that needs to be recognised as well. So Cabinet, are we happy to agree the recommendations? Thank you. So we have to move on to item 17, I have to ask public and press to disappear if that’s okay. So I need to resolve that under section 100a of the Local Government Act 1972, the public be excluded from the meeting for the following item of business on the grounds that if public are present it will be likely that exempt information, it would be likely, sorry, that exempt information under part 1 of Schedule 12a of the Acts of the Descriptions against each item would be disclosed to them. So Cabinet, are we happy to resolve that?